Stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item tonight is a public hearing on a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit for a meteorological tower located east of Schofield for EDP Renewables, Castle Valley Wind Farm, in consideration of possible approval of that conditional use permit. Todd?
And Todd, why don't you invite the folks from EDP up here, too?
So this conditional use permit is for a, essentially a test tower that's just east of Schofield. What they're going to do is the tower is going to be up there several years, test the wind condition to see if it's feasible to actually do a potential wind farm. So the Planning Commission reviewed it. We didn't see any concerns with it. They have everything outlined. They're going to, in the conditional use permit, it's our standard conditions. We also asked them to fence around the actual tower to keep livestock and wildlife out of the area, keep the site clean, any trash or rubbish or anything like that, contain it, don't let it scattered across the property. So that's kind of the basis of it.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to introduce yourselves and add any comments before we open this public hearing?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Aaron Branham. I'm a senior project manager with the development team from EDPR. I oversee the development of the Castle Valley Wind Farm. And this is my colleague, Virginia Wiseman. She's a project developer with our company and supports me on a portfolio of projects throughout the western United States, including this one. As Todd said, we're looking to receive a conditional use permit for the installation of a 95-meter MET tower. We've gone through that with Todd and made sure, I think, that at this point, we've done all we can to mitigate any impacts that that tower would have, and would like to answer any questions that the commissioners might have regarding the installation of that proposed tower.
Commissioners, any questions?
I would only comment that as the commission representative is sitting on the Planning and Zoning Committee currently, or Board, that the Board asked you a slew of questions, some, a lot of information was gathered through Todd. We have the same packet that the Planning Commission had received, and this is not your guys' first rodeo. You're very friendly with communities, and the community needs more so than is required. And I guess the only thing I, we didn't ask you before was, how many of these wind farms do you guys have throughout the United States and Mexico?
Sure. So we actually function, or our company has projects in Canada, that north, throughout North America, I should say, Canada, the US, and Mexico. We currently have 41 operating facilities on the wind farm side, and we have two solar power plants in California, with three more coming online at the end of this year. So that'll bring our total up to five, so 46 operating facilities by the end of the year throughout North America.
And I believe this is in the packet, but I can't, can't find it at the moment. Can you help us understand the total value of the wind farm that could potentially be here, assuming that this pilot project, this test wind turbine, is that what you call it?
So this would be a meteorological tower. It is the first step to assessing the wind resource and understanding the economic viability of a site. But with regards to the benefits that a wind farm could ultimately bring to Carbon County, there is, of course, I like to think of it in three levels. There's the tax revenue that the county would receive, which benefits all of the residents of the county. There are the direct payments to landowners for hosting the facility, which we have found can help mitigate some of the volatility in ranching and agriculture. And then third, there are the benefits that accrue during the construction period, which are significant to the local community. So that's the construction team, you know, hundreds of guys and girls going out to work every day and then needing gas, beer, sandwiches. So we're hoping that we could see a lot of that injected into the local community, because I know that Schofield has struggled over the past few years, and we'd like to do what we can to keep the town thriving, or bring it back to a point where it's thriving.
And as far as the Planning Commission could tell, basically, you guys are very respectful, very, very community-oriented, very good to, to the communities that you're in.
Thank you very much. And that is one of the tenets and the pillars of our company, first and foremost. Landowners are our partners. We can't do it without them, and they can't do it without us. And so the relationship that we have both with the county and our landowners is of the utmost importance to us as we work on these projects.
How many full-time operators, I guess, first of all, how many windmills, if the wind proves adequate in that area, how many, how many windmills, and with that, how many full-time operators once it's built out?
Sure. So this facility is being contemplated as an 80-megawatt facility, and depending on what the final turbine to be chosen would be, you know, over time, the sizes have gotten larger. But I think you could estimate around 20 to 22 machines total. So it's not a huge project, but turbines are punching above their weight now. They're becoming more and more efficient, so the smaller number is not necessarily indicative of a lesser impact. It's just as good, actually. And then with regards to the full-time operators that we would have on site if and when the wind farm was built, for a facility this size, you're typically going to have between three and nine individuals there to operate the site. Typically, that is split between EDPR folks, who will be the permanent team throughout the life of the wind farm, and then the operations and maintenance team from the turbine vendor, who we typically employ between two and five years. And then after that warranty period would run out, we would decide whether we want to bring in additional EDPR staff or continue contracting with the vendor that provided the turbine. So these are, you know, they're relatively good-paying jobs. They are trade, trade, excuse me, trade jobs or vocational skills jobs. But typically, we're seeing salaries starting, you know, between $50,000, $55,000 for the lowest end, and getting up towards, you know, $90,000, $100,000 for experienced managers. And that, of course, varies throughout the US, just depending on the labor market. But they're jobs that provide stability for the full life of the wind farm. And so we, you know, our operators love knowing that 20 years of job stability is a nice thing.
For sure. So the life expectancy of a, of a wind turbine is 20 years?
The contract that we would be pursuing would be 20 years, with the opportunity, hopefully, to extend that contract beyond. But I'd like to be conservative and say that 20 years would be the lifetime that we, the shortest lifetime we would look at for the facility.
Okay. And would you or Virginia speak to the assessable value of each turbine or of the group of turbines?
It's a really difficult question to answer, depending on the final value, but we like to use a rule of thumb of around $1 million a megawatt. This site is, so 80 megawatts, $80 million. This site is a little bit more challenging, so you're probably going to see an increase in price due to the topography and the accessibility of the site. That adds cost during construction. So we might be approaching, you know, $100 million facility here.
Wonderful. No, I really appreciate the information.
Yeah, thank you.
One other question then, in regards to that tax base and so forth. But do you want to talk about what kind of subsidies are involved with this, either from the federal, or if you intend to ask from any kind of subsidy from the county?
Sure. So in different counties, there are different tax arrangements for infrastructure facilities, from internet to oil to wind farms. So we'd be interested in discussing those benefits, where we might work with the county to decrease the tax burden. But if there aren't incentives, then we'll proceed with the project either way. With that regards to the federal level, we, the only incentive we receive is the production tax credit, which is based on the actual production of the wind farm. It has to be up and operating and generating clean power to get that benefit. And that would be the only benefit from the federal government we would receive.
Which is what?
I'm sorry.
Which is what?
The production tax credit. It would be dependent on what that-
Equates to a percentage or a per dollar, or?
The, so the current policy is that that has escalated, it's rolling off to zero in 2020. So the wind industry, in conjunction with our government, decided on a roll-off period in which we would no longer request any tax incentives following that period. That's currently slated to end in 2020. The value of that today is roughly $23 per megawatt hour, but that will change because there is an inflationary measure in that policy. So the year in which we went into construction, that might be, I'm not sure with the dollar value, but a little bit above $23 per megawatt hour.
Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I can't provide you with the exact number, but hopefully that gives you an idea.
Not very good. Appreciate the information.
Yeah, thank you for the questions.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I just have one other comment. This, the, this particular CUP is just for the meteorological tower. If it pans out that there is sufficient enough wind, they'll go through the process of doing another conditional use permit for the actual wind farm. So this is just for the one particular tower.
For the study, meteorological study with the tower.
It's nice to know where my, where my lead is.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing at 4:46, and would invite anyone, you can go ahead and sit down.
Thank you.
Invite anyone that would like to come forward to make comment in regards to this conditional use permit, if you'd come forward at this time, and state your name for the record, please. Anyone? We'll go ahead and close this hearing then at 4:47, with no comments noted in the record.
I think that's why we ask so many questions sometimes, is to hopefully hit those points that people who aren't here may have asked.
Okay, Commissioners, we need a motion then to go forward now that we're out of the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing, excuse me, a public hearing on proposed amendments to Section 5 of the Carbon County Development Code, conditional use permits, in consideration of possible approval of the proposed amendments.
Commissioners, can I introduce this topic for you? Todd and I, along with the input from the Planning Commission, have largely rewritten the conditional use permit portion of our county development code. Some of the, and that's basically found in Section 5.1 of the Development Code. Not all of Section 5 is being changed. Section 5.2 has not been rewritten, but I would just like to kind of give you an overview of it briefly. A large reason why we made the changes, or suggested the changes that we have, is to make conditional use permits, the issuances of them, more, more economical for applicants, and make it easier to obtain approval where appropriate. So what you will note in large measure is that many conditional use permits are going to be, if you approve this, would be authorized by your planning director, Todd here. In other words, some small operations, small things that are typically, that don't affect many people, that are small in nature, would just be things that would be authorized by, by his office, and they could be issued immediately. Larger-scale conditional use permit items, such as, you'll find those in Section 5.1.7, things like large-scale industrial projects, major utility transmission and railroad projects, mines, petroleum products processing, power plants, trucking terminals, man-made lakes and reservoirs, planned shopping centers and malls, any industrial, or any industrial or energy-related conditional use permit within a watershed zone. Those would all require approval of the Planning Commission. But contrary to how things are done now, they would not then come forward to you as county commissioners for an additional stamp of approval. The Planning Commission would simply give its approval at that stage and approve those.
In a sense, the, the commission would be lending the authority to the Planning Commission to make those decisions, right?
Well, by authorizing this change, yes. So those, those items would only be, they would come to the Planning Commission. A public hearing would not be required for those, and they would be approved at the Planning Commission level, thereby making it much easier and quicker for people to get conditional use permits approved. There would still be an appeal process, so that you, what you'd find here is that any party adversely affected by the approval of the, of the conditional use permit, that's in Section 5.1.12, could appeal to the Appeal Authority within 30 days of the decision of the Land Use Authority. So just as a reminder, when you approve a conditional use permit, that's an administrative decision. And so you are to base all your decisions, whether you approve such a permit or deny such a permit, on the substantial evidence that is brought forward to you, or I should say, that's what you do now, that would still be the standard for the Planning Commission. They would have to approve or deny conditional use permits based on substantial evidence that's brought before them, and based on the completed application. So if they, the way it is, though, with this change, we've stated that if they can, well, in general, a conditional use permit is conditional upon whether or not mitigating factors or conditions can be placed upon the, the conditional use that would make it be satisfactory and safe, and that would mitigate the potential harmful effects of the use. So if they bring forth evidence saying that they can mitigate that, then by law, they are entitled to the issuance of a, of a conditional use permit. It should be noted that a, just because something's a conditional use doesn't mean that you can simply choose one way or the other not to do it. It's not like a legislative decision. A legislative decision, all you have to have is, is a, the standard there is, is simply reasonableness. If you find any reason as to why you should or shouldn't grant a, a, say, a zone change, or set a zone in a certain place, all you have to have is a reason. It doesn't have to be based upon substantial evidence. A conditional use permit has to be based on substantial evidence. So if they can mitigate the factors that might make the use harmful, they're entitled to that. One of the other things that we've done here is we've stated that with respect to a conditional use permit, we've put in here that there's a presumption that if that conditional use permit, or if that conditional use is also regulated by a state or federal agency, and that state or federal agency has said, we give our stamp of approval to this, there's a presumption now that the, that the county body that would consider that conditional use permit, they are to consider that as a presumption that it would also satisfy their board. So unless substantial evidence is brought forward saying, no, the EPA's requirements are not sufficient here, or no, the Department of Oil, Gas, and Mining's requests and regulations of what they would impose, unless substantial evidence is brought forward to say, that's not enough, you need to do more, the Planning Commission or the planning director can say, I'll accept that as being sufficient to mitigate those impacts. Now, it may be that there are other impacts that were not considered by the use. And again, if evidence is brought forward that says, hey, we need to look at some of those, why, they can do that. So as you look at Section 5.1.9, you will see that conditions which satisfy industry standards and regularly, and regulating authorities, I'm in subpart B here, shall be presumed by the Land Use Authority to constitute substantial evidence that such conditions can be anticipated to mitigate the anticipated detrimental effects of the use. Then we say, and we go into those, and those include conditions required by local regulatory agencies, such as the southeastern Utah Health Department. That includes conditions required by the county engineer, or by a county department with authority to regulate the use or condition, which is, would often be the road department, conditions suggested or proposed by another engineer, architect, certified planner, building inspector, or other credentialed or experienced expert in the field of the conditional use. Those recommendations can be accepted as substantial evidence. Then we say that conditions, in subsection C, we go on to say, "Conditions may be imposed without the recommendation of an industry or regulatory expert, or in addition to the conditions imposed by a state or federal regulatory agency, if the Land Use Authority finds substantial evidence exists to require the imposition of such conditions." And then we have a big, long list of those. So while we, while such a body can accept the recommendations of a regulatory agency or an expert in the field as significant or, or enough, there may be a case where if Todd goes out and looks at the site and, and does the investigation and says, you know, we need to do something else, we need to require an additional lane, we need to require something that limits the generation of noise, we need to be a little more concerned about groundwater here, we have the right to do that. So, so we've kind of tried to set it up so that it's clear that when we receive that evidence, how that's received and what evidence we're looking for. So those will be the big changes that you'll notice, that there are the presumptions that those, certain types of evidence is sufficient to be deemed to mitigate the harmful use. And you'll notice that it's more streamlined now with respect to who is going to give the approval. Commissioners, I know, I've noted in the past that one of the things that you've had to do as Commissioners is to be involved in economic development activities. You've tried and are still trying to be heavily involved in bringing industry and regu, and, and business into our area, rather than have you, and, and I noticed in the past, it, it kind of sort of created a conflict of interest in some people's minds, that you'd be bringing in an industry, and then you'd also have to approve their permits. Hopefully, this allows you to be able to focus on, to not have to play divided roles, to, to be able to say, industry, come in, and you've sorted out with the Planning Commission, with the building director, you figure out what requirements are going to be required of you, but we want you to come in. That way, you can issue that, those invitations to businesses and industry uninhibited with having at the same time to consider what conditions are sufficient, and what you can waive and can't waive. So it should free your hands, it should streamline the process more. So that's kind of my introduction. I don't know if Todd wanted to hit some specific, specific sections of this. It does, I would also just point out before I turn the mic over to Todd, a, it requires that a, anybody who receives a conditional use also sign off and agree that they are going to comply with that conditional use. That has, that was not required before. That's something Todd caught, and I wholeheartedly agree with that, that they have to come in and sign, that they're going to abide by that. It also provides that a conditional use can be revoked by the Planning Commission. So if they violate the terms of their conditional use permit, that can be revoked if the Planning Commission has a hearing. They'll first be given notice of the violation and 30 days to- Uh, they'll first be given notice of the violation and thirty days to correct that. If Todd determines they haven't done that, then they're brought into the planning commission and they have to show the planning commission uh, good cause why their conditional use permit should not be revoked. So I think we've spelled out a little more specifically how conditional use permits are to be issued, how that substantial evidence is to be handled. I think it clarifies the job and the roles of the um, of the planning commission and of our planning director with respect to conditional use permits. And Todd, I probably went in circles there. I didn't, I didn't follow uh, the document per se. I don't know if there are any highlights you wanted to to hit on this.
There's no particular highlights. Um, from working with Christian and the planning commission, uh, the whole idea behind this is to be able to um, streamline our process with trainings um, that I've been through, um, in the, on the planning side, working with the state, um, property rights ombudsman, um, and just getting things in line with the state, with state code. So that when businesses come in, we can um, have the right standards issued, um, we can get them on their way, we're not, you know, holding them back. I think as uh, as a competitive world as we live in, if we can find an edge to be able to allow businesses to come in, we can put the standards in there that are required and work with our state and federal partners and say, this is what we need to do and and get that done quicker. I think it's something that businesses will appreciate and we can move them forward and get them onto constructions of their projects.
Just one last comment, I'd point out that um, this state statute does indicate that you can have conditional uses in your county, you're not required to have them. I would also point out that although our county has traditionally had public hearings prior to conditional use permits being issued, um, those are not required by state statute. I've looked carefully, it's, you're not required to have a a public hearing prior to issuing a conditional use permit.
Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, if I may just just add, um, this is, these recommendations are not uh, anything that was taken lightly or just uh, it's not anything that's been rushed. This is several months of work and and careful consideration. If I were to just generalize um, a couple of the purposes behind uh, moving this forward, there is perhaps a redundancy in in the process of of businesses coming here to our area where a- as Christian mentioned, um, the need for public hearings or or the lack thereof in certain cases. You know, currently, they have a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission level and and there's a lot of questions and a lot of, there's a process there that is then repeated again at at the commission level. Um, and and then there's uh, weeks of of processes and procedures and hoops that people have to jump through when um, depending on what it is and what the real requirements and statutes are, the process could be streamlined. And and that's what Todd and Christian both have worked um, over the past several months to uh, streamline as far as a process and helping companies get here, though uh, definitely ensuring that all the proper measures and appropriate um, procedures are still happening and that people still have a a means of appeal and um, and and everything else that is appropriate to protect our community from anything happening that shouldn't. And so I I uh, I fully um, support the process and the recommendations that they've provided us and think that it's a, it's going to, it's going to provide businesses who are entertaining our area for their home base, so to speak, um, a- and additional um, uh, it's going to ease some of their concerns in in the process that it would take to be here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open this public hearing at uh, five oh three and invite anyone that would like to speak to the matter to come forward and state your name for the record. And we'll go ahead and take those comments now.
Hello, my name is Lena Tubalovic. And first of all, I wanted to thank Christian and Todd for all the work that they've done on this document. It's been a long process and uh, anyway, and this is an improvement over the original version, which
Yeah, I I should point out, I did take into account some uh, comments that Lena gave to us uh, with respect to how section um, five point one point nine was laid out. And so Lena, I appreciate those comments, I did try to integrate those. We'll see if you think I did sufficiently well, but I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I did want to thank you for pointing those things out at the planning commission meeting.
Thank you. Um, I'm real, I'm here to discuss chapter five uh, changes. First of all, in section five point one uh, point seven, you're leaving the conditional use permits uh, in some cases up to an a one individual person to act as the land use authority. This is going to create a single viewpoint, set of conditions that may not cover all the issues that a permit may create. There is also no way for the public to know what is going on with the conditional use permit. If you look at section five point one point one two, the public will have only thirty days to appeal the permit. But if you don't even know that a permit has been issued, how would they know to bring the appeal up? At a minimum, the adjacent property owner should be aware of what is being requested with the permit prior to the permitting. Or better yet, it should be posted in the newspaper with the conditions so that all of the public uh, can have some kind of input. With section five point one point seven, uh, zoning administration shall approve an an application. They shall, that's the way it is stated. What happens if the zoning admin admin uh, wants changes made and the applicant doesn't want to make them in a timely fashion? Does the zoning administrator still have have to approve it? Once the thirty days are up? Also in that check section, what happens if the applicant uh, doesn't want to revise? Can you still reject? Section five point one point eight, I would think that we need to add at a minimum and can be rejected after the fact if based on false statements. So in other words, if you uh, give a permit to somebody and it comes to find out that there were false statements made in order to get that permit, that you can revoke that permit after the fact. Five point one point nine, uh, with the verbiage on not, nor, contrary to any precedent set by previous permits. This one uh, brings a great deal of heartburn to me. Um, this is an issue to me in that the precedents can be set by one person for all time and can't be changed for the next applicant, even though you may find a health, safety issue with the previous permit. There there isn't an option there so that you can fix issues within that document. In summary, I would still ask that we allow public input prior to decisions, not after the fact. I don't think thirty days gives anybody, especially if there's no notification anywhere, any way uh, to be to be able to get to you in those thirty days. Because if somebody doesn't start developing or making changes, that's, that is going to be the time and within that thirty days, people aren't going to know what's going on. Unless they've been notified as an adjacent property owner or unless uh, they've been notified via the newspaper. And so I I just don't think it's fair to the public in general. Uh, I'd also ask that if you leave this up to one person in making these decisions on these permits, then there be a set of standard conditions to start with that cover the possible issues. Uh, without public input, you are not bringing all the substantial evidence to the table and all the risks, even if you have a public hearing at, you know, at the zoning commission. Um, but at least have some kind of public input, public hearing and not leave it up to hope they, hope they figure out what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Commissioners, uh, if I could insert one comment real briefly, uh, I would, I would agree with Lena with respect to uh, being able to revoke a revoke retroactively a conditional use permit if it was based, made upon a, i- if it was granted because of a false or misleading statement with respect to a material representation. That seems to me to be something I would uh, I would endorse that and agree with that, I think.
Now, Christian, I know that currently we have a conditional use permit out there that is in the process of being revoked because of them noncompliant with things they previously agreed upon. So do we not already have a process by which that occurs?
Well, I I think that's a different set of circumstances.
Okay.
I mean, I I guess I would say um, there's noncompliance with the terms of the permit, and I'm saying if if a permit were issued based upon, say, somebody said they were licensed to do an activity
Okay.
and it, and we later found out they were not actually licensed by the state to do, perform that activity, I think you should be able to revoke that conditional use permit upon learning that, even if they haven't otherwise violated the terms of the use permit. Thanks, Commissioners, that's all I would add at this point.
You may, you know, my face already, uh, I'm Aaron Brandon with EDP Renewables. I just wanted to comment on this issue because we've been in conversations with Todd as you've been working through this process. And from an industry standpoint and a business standpoint, I want to say that I appreciate the efforts to streamline and make more efficient the permitting process to a company like ours, we consider that in the activities we undertake and of less burdensome permitting process that still accounts for public safety and the conditions that I know Todd tried and the planning group tried to reinforce uh, is beneficial to us and I think is a major benefit to Carbon County. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I I'd just make one comment. Um, all the conditional use permits will be um, in a public meeting, so it'll be noticed just like any other regular public meeting. Um, yes, we, in this uh, new uh, new section, there is no comments or no public hearing, but it'll be done in a public meeting, all those things will be taken into consideration. The standards are are set, so is for me, as as the planning director, there are standards built into this that we have to follow. So I can't just do as I want, there's standards we have to follow that we've outlined in this conditional use permit. So all of them will be made in a public meeting, all the decisions will be made.
The one other thing that um, I didn't notice in here is that after those permits are issued, um, I have, I would, I would propose that there be some kind of a publishing like Lena has suggested, just simply because we may not, you know, have that public hearing or that input, but if if it was issued and then obviously that thirty day timer starts and we did publish those appropriately, then, you know, I think that that would give one more step because then the procedures are there that that they can ask for that hearing within that thirty days. And that may circumvent some of the issue that, you know, could potentially arise from just the administrator making those decisions. I don't know how that would work into that code, but
Well, I think we could simply put in a provision in here that says after the after the decision were ma- is made, then it has to be published in the newspaper. Um, and only at that time, after pub- after it's published in the newspaper, it would, then the thirty days time period would begin to run for the appeal. So that could easily be inserted into this um, in into this section.
And I'd just throw out that as a best practice, a lot of companies coming in to get a conditional use permit will already be speaking to the neighbors and letting them know um, just as a best practice, what they're doing and proposing to do.
Any other comments for the public hearing? We'll go ahead and close this public hearing then at five thirteen. Come back to the commission for comments or proposals.
I have a couple of questions. If if you said that there would be a public meeting um, that these would be be presented at, is that the planning commission? How, and and if they're not voting on it, you're just presenting it to them? How does that work?
So the ones with the, I I I guess I should clarify, the ones with the planning commission will be a public meeting.
Correct.
So the ones that I'm allowed to approve, um, I'll give you an example. Um, we had one earlier this year out on Airport Road. Um, there was an existing business that was um, a mining related business. There was a, another business going in there doing the same, same use. They get, they came through for a conditional use permit, came to planning commission, came to county commission, public hearing. Those are the type of uh, projects we're talking about where it, that the use was already there, the conditions are already set forth. Rather than to make them go through six weeks of waiting and permitting, we can say, look, this is a a a minor use, um, the fencing's there, you know, the the garbage containers are there, um, lighting, all those things that are, the standards are there. I'd be able to approve, so those ones wouldn't necessarily come to planning commission. I'd be able to prove the minor ones, the major ones.
So if it's a change in use or a, one of the large uses, then it would come to the full committee, planning commission. But if it's just a renewal of that use, then it would be more of a process through you.
So
Well, or even if it were in a
If if it were the first time, let's say, an industrial use, I think all of our industrial uses are conditional use permits, but if it's a light industrial use within an industrial zone and it hadn't been used at all, Todd could still approve that one. So if it were light industry coming into a light industrial zone, we still require those industrial zone uses to be conditional use permits. Um, that's the type of thing Todd could, oh, you're going to do some light manufacturing? Okay, come in, Todd can approve that, you're in an industrial zone.
Cause it, it fits with all the expectations of what is already created and and zoned. Um, one way that can help me understand that the power and authority that is being lent to one individual here is we have those conditional uses, and this is wrong terminology, but it can help me think of it in the right way. If we call them like specified uses or change of ownerships and nothing is changing materially for any of the neighbors or the health of the public or any anything i- in the surrounding area, that really, we should be promoting business in our area and it's just a formality to go through because in in fa- in all facts, none of the expectations are changing for its use. There may just be a change of ownership or there's an area already zoned for industrial and it's a light industrial project. Any of the surrounding neighbors have expectations of what's supposed to be there because it's already been zoned that way for a long time. And so having one individual in power to be able to go and and just carry out what expectations already exist i- is just a means of streamlining the process.
I would also point out that the code does say that if if Todd desires, if the zoning administrator isn't comfortable being the only eyes on the project, he can, he can say, no, I'm going to require you to go before the planning commission on this one. Even though I have the authority to approve it, I think we, I want extra eyes on this one. So if he, if he gets the sense that that's the type of thing, he can, he can pass it down.
Okay, one more question then. Um, the the question was brought up about the zoning administrator shall approve the application within thirty days. Should that say shall approve or deny? Or shall approve and or move to the planning commission for further approval?
So if if Todd were to deny it, that Lena brought up a good point, maybe we could clarify that more. If Todd were to deny it and it was the type of thing that he had the sole authority for, let's say it was a, a uh, you know, a gas pump in a, in somebody's field, just a single, single pump out there and he denied it for whatever reason, that person would then be able to go to the um, would go to the appeal authority, would not have to go to the planning commission um, if that were denied. So if you're denied by the planning commission, you would go to the appeal authority. If you're denied by the zoning administrator, you would go to the planning, or to the appeal authority as well. Uh, next month, we're going to bring you another change that we're hoping to have in, which would say we're, that as an appeal authority, you will uh, hire an administrative law judge who has experience in planning and zoning type matters to be the appeal authority rather than a board of adjustment, um, which is how it is right now. So uh, that's where it would go in those circumstances. But but maybe we could do more to specify that, and I agree, probably should say shall deny or shall approve or deny. We we can be specific that way.
And and if he doesn't, what does that mean? If if, say Todd gets extremely busy and he, one slips under the radar for more than thirty days, is that an automatic approval or a denial, or does that move on to the planning commission? Not to say that would happen, I'm just
Well, it it could happen.
But in the past, it has. But in the past, it has.
And that's why I'm asking that question.
It has, not necessarily with Todd, but just.
No, sorry.
I guess my recommendation would be that it go to the Planning Commission at that point. In other words.
Just so long as there, there is a defined step, that if Todd doesn't take action within the thirty days, it's not an automatic approval or a denial, but that there is a step, what is that step?
I, that's a good point. I, I would recommend that it go to the Planning Commission at that point. In other words, I, I don't think you want it approved unscrutinized, not having been looked at.
Right.
Uh, also don't think it should be deemed a denial when that person may have done everything that was required. So I'd recommend it go to the Planning Commission if it has not received an approval or denial within thirty days. That's a, that's a good point.
Okay.
I believe in the past, it's been, if it hasn't been acted on, it's assumed to have been approved, which is, which is a dangerous policy.
I, I think so.
Those, those were all my questions.
So, legal question then, Christian, we've made some suggestions on some changes. Um, we have held this public hearing, but do we go ahead and make those changes? Or do we go ahead and work on it, bring it back, look at it?
I think you ought to direct us to work on it and bring it back, and that you not approve it tonight, but that you approve it only after you've seen final changes.
And have those red lines so we can see exactly what they're in.
That's right.
Do, so do we need to have it noticed again?
You don't have to have another public hearing, no.
I'll make a motion to, uh, have you go back and revise some of those and, and fix it for, uh, re- reapproval at a later date.
For reconsideration, I guess.
Reconsideration at a later.
In other words, there's no presumption yet that you've voted on it or approved it. So there, we'll just do that and bring it back for a vote when we've got those changes.
Todd or Christian, when would you like to bring that back?
I think we could have those on for the next, uh, for your next meeting, those aren't, those changes wouldn't be too hard to make.
January third?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and stick a play saver there for that item then.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item then is to open sealed bids for the two thousand eighteen chip seal materials. Chips, chip oil and asphalt, uh, for the projects with the County Road Department. Seth and Daniel.
Okay, um, for the chip seal projects, the first one I have is from Mountain State's Asphalt. And this is for two thousand eighteen LM CRS two chipping oil. FOB Mountain States Asphalt Terminal in Tuilla, Utah. Thousand US tons, price is three hundred and forty-nine dollars a ton. I have the other oil ones. That's the only one for chipping oil. The next bid I have is from Ute Light. Should be chip unless they've started making oil too. Okay, so this is for, I don't remember one. Type A chip, thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents a yard. Um, type cheap, that's for type A chip, and type C chip is also thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents a yard. Extended out for the cubic yards that were requested would be one hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars, ninety-four cents.
One fifty-six what?
One hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-seven, ninety-four. And I'm looking. This AF will be where? With the shipping point, I don't know if it, I don't know if it listed it. What? So it'll be shipping from Rockport. And that is the, those are the bids that I have for chip and oil, I don't have one for asphalt. I'll see one. Chipping. Chipping oil.
Chipping oil, yeah.
Those are, those are the two.
Those are the two that we have for that item.
So we'll definitely need to go back out for the asphalt, it sounds like. And we'll take a motion on how to handle these, Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the bids and turn them over for Daniel for review. Um, do you, pausing my motion for just a minute, do you want him to come back with a recommendation or award? Do you have a recommendation, Commissioners?
Well, we've only got the two. I think my thoughts would be if they're in line, uh, based on, you know, pricing and even last year's, I'd say we go ahead and move forward.
I, I'd say we'd be fine unless for some reason Daniel instructs us to, uh, go out to bid again.
Okay. My, my motion is then to acknowledge the bids and turn them over to Daniel for review. And if they're in align, alignment with what he thinks the prices should be, award them.
Have a motion?
Can I second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then if you'll go ahead and work on the asphalt again. Commissioners, item number four was, uh, sealed bids in regards to striping projects. And I understand that we need to advertise, re-advertise on that, is that correct? Seth, or did you receive anything on this?
We didn't, we didn't receive anything for striping, um, it'll need to be brought in at the next meeting.
So we'll need to table that item, if we have a motion.
Motion to table?
Seconded.
On favor, aye. Number five then is open sealed bids for the two thousand eighteen Road Department for tires.
Um, for the tires, we received two bids, one that was received, um, by twelve forty-five PM, and the other one was received at three fifty-one. The advertisement, the request for bids, said that all bids needed to be received before three PM today. So this one was received late. I'm not planning on opening it, unless you tell me, I have to.
That's upon my recommendation, Commissioners, because the bid notice clearly stated that it was to be in by three o'clock PM. And, uh, that's the first thing that's considered when reviewing a, uh, if a court were to look at, uh, an appeal from a decision made with respect to awarding a contract that was bidded out, uh, that's the first thing they would look at is whether or not that contract complied with all the terms, or that submission complied with all the terms of the bid notice. And so my recommendation is that that bid notice not be opened at this point, and that the other one be the only one considered.
Second bid is from Dinosaur Tire Les Schwab Tire Center. And it has different groups of tires, drive tires, steer tires, trailer tires, axle tires for Group One and Group Two with various prices according. If you want me to read them all, I can.
No, that's all right. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we recognize the, uh, timely bid, the singular, singular timely bid as Dinosaur Tire.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Just along in that motion to allow Daniel to, uh, evaluate the prices and determine whether or not we need to go out for bid again or accept those.
So we have an amendment to that.
I'll second the amendment.
All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is to open sealed bids for the two thousand eighteen scrap metal for the road shop. Guess this is the landfill scrap metal, excuse me.
Correct. We have received two bids for that, the first is from Basin Industries. Okay, so Scope Works purchased all scrap metal of Carbon County landfill. Basin Industries will pay Carbon County fifty-eight dollars per net ton for metal removed. It also mentions contractor will use his own front end loader, roll-off truck and roll-off bins. Basin Industries has been in business since two thousand and one, so that's bid number one.
Does it say anything about fluctuating price or?
It just says fifty-eight dollars net ton for two thousand and eighteen.
It doesn't mention anything about taking the refrigerators or any CFCs.
Didn't we have that in our bid notice that went out? Did we use the same form that we used the year before? So I don't know that that's fatal, we might want to check with them and see if they're still willing to. In other words, uh, if you're okay with the other part of it, we could put that in the contract that we give to them. And if they're still, if they're willing to do that, because that has been in the contract in the past. That may have simply been an omission or an error that they overlooked that part.
Don't, don't jump ahead, I got one more bid.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, all right.
Yeah, we actually got two bids on this.
Which is nice. The other bid we received is from Stevenson Metal Recycling. Um, proposed purchase price for scrap metal is ninety-one dollars per ton. Prices to be reevaluated between county and contractor each time the county wants the scrap metal cleaned up through the end of twenty eighteen. For a two thousand pound ton. They mentioned that they will provide equipment trucks for removal and cleanup of metal at the landfill. And they have mentioned Stevenson Metal Recycling will be responsible for the removal of CFCs from refrigerators. And all removal of CFCs will be done off county property. You know, I guess the only question on that one is it says proposed purchase price for scrap metal is ninety-one dollars a ton. But they mentioned prices to be reevaluated between county and contractor each time the county wants the scrap metal cleaned up through the end of twenty eighteen.
Whereas we, we solicited for, um, removal of all scrap metal from Carbon County landfill through December thirty-first of twenty eighteen.
So I guess, I guess the two, two questions I'd have is for Basin Industries to, to verify that they'll take the CFCs and Stevenson Metal Recycling to verify that they'll, they'll honor the ninety-one dollars a ton through the end of the year.
What, what was the price on the basin submitted?
Fifty-eight dollars a ton.
So they accounted for the kind of fluctuation in the pricing. And it has been in the past, it's been reevaluated.
So, so this says, uh, should state the price that will be paid or the manner in which the price will be calculated. I know in the past, there, there's a, there's a market out there, a San Francisco standard market price that kind of varies from day to day, um.
Fifty-eight dollars versus a ninety-one, that's kind of a substantial difference.
Unless the renegotiation, the next time around is twenty dollars.
Right.
So that's one thing on basins, they didn't specify the two thousand pound ton. So you've got the net ton or the two thousand pound ton. So you can lose money on that. The county can lose money depending on what they're equating. It's weird to me, a ton's a ton, but in the scrap metal industry, it's not.
Sounds like there's a number of questions in regards to these.
Yeah, I think we might want to look at that, and, uh, I think Daniel and I might want to look at that together.
What, what if we acknowledge the bids and go from there if we have, and then we can, we probably better bring this one.
Want to bring it back to you on this one.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we acknowledge the bids from Basin Industries and Stevenson Metal Recycling. And that, uh, between Daniel and Christian, that we bring the item back for decision.
A motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is a presentation and possible approval to amend the Community Impact Board priority list. Michael Bryant.
So this is a similar process to what we did a few months ago with the, uh, list amendments. Um, as you'll note in your, um, information there, there's two items to be added to this current, uh, fiscal year, uh, capital improvements list. Uh, they are, um, one for East Carbon City. Um, it's titled Standing Water Solutions, and it's intended to, uh, remove standing water and, uh, storm drainage issues and concerns. Uh, that project is in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and they've actually already submitted that application to the Community Impact Board. And the Community Impact, they did it and under the, um, under the means of a, uh, emergency request. And the, uh, CIB staff requested that it be put on the, um, list. And so that's the reason why that one's, has the December, um, submitted date. Uh, any questions on, on that one?
Commissioners, uh, just for the record, uh, I think it should be noted in the minutes that Mr. Bryant is here on behalf of the Association of Local Governments, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, the second project is Price City Project for a community baseball complex. Um, from what I understand, they are going to be partnering with the Carbon School District on this project, but no dollar amount was pledged by the school district, and so it's not reflective on that, um, list. Uh, the total amount for that is three million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, with a grant request of two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and a loan amount of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. And they anticipate going to the board, uh, the Community Impact Board in February for this project.
Do they have a location for that?
It'll be their current, uh, baseball fields, the softball and baseball field area, they're gonna improve those fields.
At the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
And it doesn't look like there's any local monies going into that one either, to simply request for loan and grant.
I guess you could say that that one's probably gonna have some in-kind, but like I said, they didn't specify that to me, so.
Including the land, so.
Right.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Take a motion?
Make the motion to approve the updated list.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Michael. Next item is a review and possible approval for subdivision amendment number one to Green Thumb Subdivision. Phase one, also vacating Green Thumb Minor Subdivision located approximately at thirty-one ninety-seven east and forty-two fifty south. Turn the time to Gary and Todd.
I represent Stevenson Metal and I couldn't hear your decision on the scrap metal bid.
Well, what we asked them to do was to review Daniel and Christian what was, you know, what we requested versus what we received. Work out those details and bring them back to us next commission meeting on January third so that we could then make a final decision. Just because both bids, there's some questions in those, so they'll be reaching out to you or whoever.
Both bids or what again?
Both, both bids had some different issues in them in regards to what was put in the bid notice. So we'll have.
Each, each bid did not address the, the notices, that's what?
Correct.
They're to be reviewed more thoroughly and no decision was made.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing.
You're, you're okay. No, no decision was made.
No decision was made, so the.
So we're going to review it more, more in detail.
So we have to resubmit another bid or you're just gonna review the ones that you've received?
Correct. We will review the ones that we received and they will bring back a recommendation in January.
January third?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Anyway, we'll turn the time to Gary and to Todd.
So this amendment is with Mr. Scow. The, he is cleaning up the, his minor subdivision, so what he has is, is two lots in a minor subdivision and his home located on another, another parcel. So to clean it up, he's making amendment to make three lots that basically cover, covers property rather than two smaller lots and one really big one. He's making it three lots and just cleaning up the legal descriptions and the survey and everything else, so. There wasn't any issues with, with planning commission. It's just more of a procedural thing to, to fix it and make it, make it better.
Gary, anything you'd like to add?
They, they took care of it.
Commissioners, any questions? No questions, but just again on the planning and zoning committee, it was reviewed and mostly just cleaning up the, the property and boundary lines so that it more adequately represents the desires of Gary.
This doesn't change the boundary line with any neighbor or any adjoining landowner, so.
Just his own.
That's right.
So it doesn't need a public hearing then?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Next item is review and possible approval of the 2017 personal property tax exemptions. We'll turn the time to Julie.
Commissioners, we have submitted to you from our office, the personal property accounts that have.
Yeah, just a few of them, right?
Yep. Filed for the exemption. Utah code allows any business that has under ten thousand five hundred in value that they can claim the exemption. If they do not file by the May fifteenth deadline, then they automatically don't get the exemption. So this year we had five hundred and seventy.
Julie, please move the mic over. They were probably not picking that up.
This year we had five hundred and seventy-seven, which dropped about a hundred from last year.
Total values?
Yeah, dropped about a hundred applicants, right?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
So total abated in taxes was eight hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Commissioners, have you had a chance to review those? Any other questions?
No. Just for the record, my wife does have, is one of those businesses, so I will be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you.
Capture the moment by Jana. It's a photography business.
Any other questions?
No, I don't see any. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
And I'll step down and second that, noticing that Commissioner Hopes is abstaining from that vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain.
And abstain. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next item is review and possible consideration of a lease agreement for the Seventh District Courthouse between Carbon County and the administrative offices of the court. Christian, do you want to?
Sure, I'll introduce it and Seth and I had some discussion on this. I've talked with a couple of you about it as well. The concern with this contract, it, this is the lease agreement that would be in place during the time period that the county is paying the bond off to build this building should be noted.
To build the.
Or to build the Seventh District Courthouse.
Located on Main Street.
Right. And it should be noted that the lease payment will be equal to the amount of the bond, so there will not be amounts coming out of the, the county's general fund will not be paying for this bond. The lease payments will do that. But my concerns with it are they have asked for an option to purchase the building. The administrative office of the courts has asked for that. My concern with the language in that section three point three where they ask for that is that there doesn't seem to be an expiration date for that option to purchase. If you decide to grant that option, which you have not decided, which you have, in fact, in the past, you've stated that it was the county's intent, at least for now, to own that building. But if you were to grant them an option to purchase, there should be an expiration date, I believe, on that option to purchase. They should be required to, I would think, purchase that by the end of the term of that, of the lease. And, and should be required to express that in writing. The other concern I have is that if they wish to, and this was something Seth and I talked about, if they wish to be able to purchase the building, the problem is, is that we will be paying for all of the upkeep and the repairs and the maintenance of it under section two point five. It seems to me that as consideration for the right to purchase that option, you may want to tell the administrative office of the courts that they need to pay for any repairs to the building. They need to maintain it and upkeep it if it's in fact their intent to receive it and purchase it and then have it as their own at the end of the lease period. You know, typically we haven't kept a sinking fund for all of these buildings. That would be a burden, I think, for us to do and especially if we don't know if they're going to actually purchase the building or not. If they just have that option and then for whatever reason, you know, in the year twenty forty-three decide not to purchase that building, why then? We're left with maintaining it and we will have maintained it all along and it, it may become an extra cost to us. So I would recommend that you consider amending that lease agreement to state that they will maintain it, maintain the structural integrity of it, including the roof, all the systems within it and that that be part of the consideration that, for which they get the option to purchase. Another option that you could do is you could, if you're not certain at this point whether or not you want to grant them that option to purchase, you could, another option would be to give them simply a first right of refusal, so that in the case you did decide to sell the building, they would be the first ones who would have that right. But by giving them a first right of refusal, you're not binding yourselves to sell it. You can, you can or, or cannot sell it depending on what you choose at your discretion later on. I was also concerned that there's a part in there. Seth pointed out to me that there's a, a set amount in the payment schedule on that lease for operation and maintenance of that building. I believe that's around fifty-six thousand dollars. The concern there is if, after a couple of years of operating that building, suppose the cost of that building, of maintaining that building exceeds what we've put into that lease. It seems to me we might want to say, well, we will evaluate the cost of operation and maintenance every three to five years or something like that. And, and reset that amount periodically based on either the highest amount in that three-year period that the operation and maintenance cost or go through it or use a three-year average, the, the last three years. So that we're not, it's certainly possible that utilities, which we would be paying otherwise, it's certainly likely, more likely than not, that that cost will increase and inflation will increase that cost throughout the year. So I think we need to add some flexibility in there with respect to that provision. I think the bigger thing though is that you as a body need some time to decide whether or not you want to grant that option to purchase. The one benefit is, you know, is if at the, the end of the lease period, that building is now more costly to maintain. If you were to, if they were to purchase it and take it off the county's hands, then that could end up saving the county substantial money in the future going forward. The negative of that, of course, is that you wouldn't be getting that lease revenue. So I think it requires a little more time. I think you may wish to decide, have a little more time to consider that. And, and I would like to submit to you and to Seth some suggested language that we could send back to the state to insert in some of those provisions you've noticed as you've read the contract. And maybe I could draft some, some language for you to approve at our next, next meeting.
Perhaps an additional item to consider is the, whether it's with this lease or separate on its own, but the additional cost of bailiff services that the county sheriff's department is required to provide. And the increasing payments we have received over the last couple of years, somehow addressing that matter, whether in conjunction with this lease agreement or separate.
Yes, I agree. And I can suggest some language there as well, so.
Thank you, Christian. Any other questions or comments?
I, I feel comfortable making a motion that we don't make a decision today, that we turn it over to Christian for, as he recommended, some new language and some more thorough review to those items that have been mentioned.
Go ahead and table that then.
Do you want to put a date to bring it back?
What, what kind of a timeframe would you like?
Oh, I don't think it will be too difficult to get it back for the third, so we could do that.
Go ahead and place it on the third then. Table until the third with those recommendations.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is consideration of possible approval of ordinance number four ninety, which was the revised business license ordinance that Christian had talked about at our last meeting.
Commissioners, that's still a work in progress. I apologize, I don't have that done for you. I'm still working on the language on that. When we send out our business licenses, I think we'll just have to include a notice that the, that home-based businesses will not be taxed if they can explain or show that they will not be increasing, basically increasing the traffic into the neighborhood beyond that which was already occurring as set forth in the statute. So that was the change we wanted, one of the changes we wanted to capture. I'm still looking at and working on some language for short-term rentals. But I think that requires more time and consideration, so I would ask that you table that one indefinitely for now. I'll, I'll get it put back on as soon as I've got you a draft.
Motion to table then.
Motion seconded.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Christian. Next item then is a review and possible adoption to fill vacancies on county boards. And it was good to have a lot of people involved in this process and a number of applications. Commissioners, I propose, and Christian can help guide this too, that we take each of the boards separately and have that discussion and make those recommendations. The first, well, the first one on the public notice was in regards to the Carbon County Planning Commission. So let's talk about how many we need at this point and then we can go ahead and make those recommendations.
So Commissioners, you need, as the board sits right now, we, we will have three vacancies. Don Torgerson has asked to be let go from the board. R.D. Campbell, who served many years, did not reapply. Tom Paluso, who has also served very, he's, he's served for many years also. His term period is up. So we have three right now. Now Todd and I are proposing some changes to the board wherein we will also have two alternates on the board and where the county commission seat is no longer a seat held by the county commission. So in about a month, we'll be asking you to reconstitute the board with three new members as well, two alternates and one, one new sitting member. But as you have not yet approved that change, that hasn't been made official yet, tonight you only need to approve and appoint three members to the board to fill the vacancies that are, that will occur as of January first.
Thank you. Commissioners, we did have six applicants. Tom Paluso, Michael Bryant, Spencer Lovelace, Daniel Hinckley, Trapper Burdick and Kerry Van Dyke. So we need to appoint three of those at this point in time.
I'd just like to mention that it's very refreshing to have such qualified candidates for the planning and zoning board. It's not every day that occurs and so we're, we're very fortunate to have so many engineers or, you know, private business manufacturing, you know. It's kind of representative of many aspects of our community that deal with planning and zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve Michael Bryant, Daniel Hinckley and Trapper Burdick.
Have a motion. Any other discussion or substitute in any way?
Nope, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Have a motion and a second then to appoint Michael Bryant, Daniel Hinckley and Trapper Burdick. These are for four-year terms. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just add that in discussions with Christian, since there will be more positions available as soon as those changes are made, that those applicants who are not chosen also be eligible for those subsequent positions without having to reapply.
I think that's proper to.
But of course, we'll be still accepting applications if anybody else interested comes forward.
And it'll be noticed at that point in time.
Right.
So do we need a motion to carry those names forward?
I think you ought to make that motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we carry those names forward for those future positions next month to be considered, as well as to notice the public for any additional applicants that would like to be considered.
I'll second that.
And that would be for Tom Paluso, Spencer Lovelace and Kerry Van Dyke. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next one on the notice was the Carbon County Tourism Tax Advisory Board. Commissioners, we have a, we have four vacancies there and with the statute set by the state, that board needs to be made up of a majority. Currently, it's a five-person board, but we need to have a majority of those people from industry, meaning basically the hotel industry, restaurant industry or convenience stores where prepared food is sold. So it was made, the motion, or not motion, but recommendation from Christian with legal counsel was that tonight we appoint, if you desire, the two that are associated with industry. We would really need a third one there in order to appoint two basically at-large departments. So those two that are associated with the industry are Jana Olson and Maline Robinson, both from restaurant and from hotel. The other applicants are Mark Jespersen, Jennifer Jensen and Nick Tatten. What we'd have to do then going forward would be to basically either re-advertise or task ourselves to find one more industry person so that we could have a full board. State law does require that at least five people are on that board. Any other questions or thoughts, Christian or Commissioners?
I agree with that. I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept the two from industry and to re-advertise for the additional industry position so that we can move forward with those who do not represent industry.
Could we, could we go ahead and carry those forward again as part of that motion?
Sure. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item was the Carbon County Career Service Council. Next item was the Carbon County Career Service Council. And we have, uh, four vacancies there, three regular with one alternate. And, um, those are for three-year terms. The alternate is a one-year term. We did not have any applications for that particular board. I'd, uh, suggest we make a motion to go ahead and reapply or re-advertise and then use our resources to see if we can get that one filled.
Motion to re-advertise.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Housing Authority of Carbon County is our next one. We have one vacancy there, and we did have two applicants, but Commissioner Hope's, if you wanna address, we have Tina Lyons and Kerry Van Dyke.
Tina Lyons actually lives in, outside of the county, so I don't think she's eligible for this position. So I'll make a motion to approve Kerry Van Dyke.
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next one is the Schofield Reservoir Special Service District. And there is one, uh, vacancy there, regular, and it is in Singleton's. And we did have one applicant, which is Casey Williams.
I'll make a motion to approve Casey Williams to the Schofield Reservoir Special Service District.
And I'll second your motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next one is the Carbon County Sheriff's Merit Board. We have one, uh, vacancy, and it is a six-year term. We did have, uh, two applicants, but I believe that in looking at the timeline, the application for Ed Chavez has not expired and will not until the end of two thousand and eighteen. So he, his position is still filled by him. We had one other applicant, uh, John Daniels, and that is all that we had in those two.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve John Daniels, finding no concern or reason otherwise.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next one is the Southeastern Utah District Health Department and Board of Health. I believe Christian had a recommendation in regards to what to do with that one while we're in this process of, of reorganizing.
You know, while we wait to, um, we're gonna have at least, uh, I believe, three members, most likely have three members on that board. And until we finalized our MOU, I would recommend that you do appoint someone. And so it looks like we do have an applicant.
You, you say you?
I think that would be fine to go ahead and appoint a member for now.
Even, even though that, um, interlocal agreement's not in?
Um, yes, because just in, uh, I don't know that you'd need to. I think you can. Uh, I guess my concern is if there were a matter that the health department were to consider, um...
Be good to have that.
Uh, be good to have, have that board filled.
My understanding, of course, is that the counties that provide representation can always fill those seats and positions by the commissioners themselves if those seats are not filled, if, if a decision comes forth. Our meeting is not until later in, in January. I, I was actually recommending that perhaps we table this until we are through the MOU process.
I think that's fine.
Unless there becomes a need.
I, I think that's fine. I don't see an urgency to.
Part, part of the process to establish our interlocal agreement will be the restructuring of how board members are chosen and, um, how many board members each county receives. And so there is perhaps some degree of uncertainty there still to this date. And so rather than appointing right away and then possibly having to make changes later, um, that we continue as, as we are now. And if needed, a commissioner can fill in for the one meeting that we might have before that interlocal is in force.
Tell us again when that meeting is, Commissioner Miller?
Um, it's typically, I believe, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
In January?
In January. So is that the twenty-second? Uh, let me pull up the calendar real fast. Twenty-third. Thank you, Brady.
So, um, if we hold on this one then, Christian, if, if it is tabled, then we may or may not have the MOU in. Would, would it be the recommendation then that we just leave it open and one of us fill that until?
I don't know that one of you can fill that, though. Under the bylaws, you can only, you're only to fill one position. So I don't think, I'm not sure I agree with Commissioner Miller that you can appoint one of you to fill the other com- position. Cause there's one commissioner position and there's one at-large position. But I think what you could do is appoint somebody, you know, if there were an emergency between now and the twenty-third and you wanted to have another member, I don't know why you couldn't appoint someone at one of your next two meetings to fill that position. But I don't know that you, I guess I haven't looked at it close enough, but I don't, the bylaws say that one position is to be a commissioned position. I don't know that you can simply insert yourselves into the at-large one to make up that third member.
Can we simply appoint a member up until the new interlocal is formed and then that, at that point, we could re-advertise and reappoint?
I think you could do that as well. Yes. I think you could go without, or you could appoint someone provisionally to act until such time, make that a provisional appointment until such time as the MOU is, has been entered into and formalized by all the counties. I think you could do either, either one.
Jake, do you have a preference? You sit on that board?
Uh, I was just, you know, even though there is some ambiguity on how commissioners can fill those positions of representative, representatives not, you know, holding the commissioner's seat, there is precedence of other counties doing that, namely Wasatch and some of these others. As it, and it may have been more of a formal decision. And it was in replacing members rather than just substituting or proxying.
I disagree with you, having read the bylaws. I don't, I mean, if you, I don't know that that's why. I'm, I'm not certain that we need to decide that issue, though, right now.
Let's, let's turn a few minutes over to Brady Bradford.
Um, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what you wanna do, but the current board members, um, there is some understanding there's gonna be restructuring there. But, uh, one has resigned and one's term is up. We could let the remainder of those seven board members stand for January if you, and, and so we would still have more than a quorum if, and, and be okay to make decisions in, in that manner, as long as all the counties are okay with that process.
I'm also wondering if, because it sounds like we may need to do a little research, that if we tableed appointing that one until the third, I know we're pushing things forward and then make a decision at that point in time on, you know, how that could be filled if we had an issue that needed to have a full board or full representation.
And I think doing it on the third or even, you know, the next commission meeting after, there's still plenty of time before the twenty-third, which is our next meeting. So I, I would just say that we table the, uh, filling of the vacancy at this point until we can have further discussion.
Do you wanna carry forward his name?
Yes.
Uh, yes, just as we've done with the others.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Thank you, Brady.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's try and clear that one up and bring it back for the third if we could.
Well, commissioners, could I, could you quickly recall number eight? I think, I think there was a question about the value of the exemptions that were given, and I'm not sure. I think Julie, you said eight hundred dollars was the value of the exemptions?
Number nine?
Number nine.
Come on up, Julie, or you used the mic there.
And I'm not sure that was that accurate.
I have my glasses on, and when I got back down there and sent my paper down, I was like, whoa.
I see a, is the total number that we have on the back of the packet?
Yes, that is correct.
Which is one million eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars?
It was exempt in value, but as far as taxes go, it was fifteen thousand one oh six twenty-one. And I looked the wrong line down, so I apologize, but I just wanted to get that corrected for the record.
Thank you.
But the paper you have was correct.
Is correct.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, sorry.
Thank you. Number thirteen is consideration and adoption of the final two thousand and seventeen budget, Seth.
Commissioners, this has been beaten to death. Our last commission meeting, um, the budget was presented, um, both two thousand and seventeen budget, the two thousand and eighteen budget. They've, uh, we had, held the public hearings on those budgets, um, before the end of the year. The commission needs to take formal, um, action to, to do that. And Christian, I may, just, I believe it needs a resolution number assigned to it.
It might. So we can, we can turn it into a resolution?
Okay. Um, to, a resolution to adopt the two thousand and seventeen, well, a resolution to adopt the two thousand and eighteen budget and, and the amendments for the two thousand and seventeen budget. I believe that they should be done separately, but.
Correct.
By resolution.
So that would be the two thousand and seventeen budget as amended, taking into account the amendments that were discussed at the last meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And while we would not have a resolution number to assign to that tonight, we could.
Twenty seventeen dash ten.
Twenty seventeen dash ten and two thousand and seventeen dash eleven.
So any other questions or discussions?
Go ahead and make the motion that we approve the amended, uh, two thousand and seventeen final budget with the resolution two thousand and seventeen dash ten.
A second now?
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Let's also consider the, um, adoption of the two thousand and eighteen budget then. Any questions or concerns as presented in the public hearings?
Motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen budget and the resolution two thousand and seventeen dash eleven.
Motion?
In a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution calling a board of equalization and adopting an assessment list for special tax assessment area number two thousand and fifteen dash one Hilltop subdivision.
Commissioners, this is the next step in, uh, being able to, um, go after that bond for the special assessment area for the Hill subdivision. The, uh, residents and owners of the property there are required by law to have an opportunity to come and , uh, object to the, uh, value of the, of the assessment. And, uh, that's, that's all set forth in the resolution that's before you. So it also schedules certain dates and times at which the, uh, board of equalization is to, is to be held.
So this would be two thousand and seventeen dash twelve?
By resolution, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution two thousand and seventeen dash twelve, calling for a board of equalization and adopting a, an assessment list.
Have a motion?
In a second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll move that forward then and get those dates set and published. Next item is consideration and approval of an agreement with Snow, Christensen, and Martino for provisions of legal service with respect to notice of claim filed against Carbon County, Christian.
Commissioners, you're aware of the notice of claim that has been, uh, brought and filed against the county, uh, which may or may not turn into a lawsuit at some point. But our assur- insurance company has assigned to us the law firm of Snow, Christensen, and Martino to represent us in that matter. And they've just asked that we sign a retainer agreement to that effect.
Any other questions, commissioners?
The only thing I think we need to do is just notify the, the attorneys that are suing us that the contact point is not Robert Piro, it's Seth Olvison.
And also the old address is?
Needs to be updated, yeah.
Updated. Needs to be updated.
Right.
I don't know if that changes anything, but.
I don't think, uh, I don't think it does.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve an agreement with Snow, Christensen, and Martino.
Have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is review and possible approval of interlocal agreements for Ridge Road and Wellington redevelopment areas.
You jumped over seventeen?
Sorry. Let's back up then. Review and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding with Emory and Grand Counties regarding Southeastern Utah Health District.
Commissioners, we reviewed, uh, a little bit of what this MOU would entail, uh, in, in the last commission meeting. Um, we didn't have the language worded on the agenda to actually make a decision at that time, so it's there now. I don't know if there's any more discussion or questions in regards to the MOU that will stand as a, as an interim placeholder until we have a fully, um, vetted interlocal agreement agreed upon by all three counties.
I didn't have any questions after having reviewed that.
I don't have any questions.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the MOU and that we continue to work towards an interlocal agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item then is the review and possible approval of the interlocal agreements for Ridge Road and Wellington redevelopment areas. I don't know if Christian or Seth want to address anything there, or commissioners if you have questions.
Seth is probably more versed in this than I am. I would just point out that, um, formally the title of these areas are the Ridge Road Economic Development Project Areas One and Two. Uh, one of them has informally been called just the Ridge Road Redevelopment Area, and the other one, uh, has called, been called the, uh, Wellington Redevelopment Area. But they're both along Ridge Ro- Road, and, um, with that, I just point out that they are, that interlocal agreement, the original one was entered into back in two thousand and two and, and is set to expire at the end of this year, so, uh, we do want to keep that, um, area as a redevelopment area, and so we need to, um, have another interlocal agreement that continues that in place. I think Seth can kinda talk about the tax increment percentages and so forth, if you don't mind, Seth.
Okay. The, uh, for, for those, just for the record, that may be watching or whatever, and also for the commissioners, I understand, you already understand this probably better than most, but an economic development project area is an area that, um, can set aside the incremental tax generated from that area for economic growth. That's done by an interlocal agreement between all of the taxing entities that wanna participate in that area and the agency. The, um, the two project areas that we're talking about today, um, Ridge Road One and Two, one of them, the agency that controls that, the economic development of that area is Carbon County. The other is Wellington, hence we've basically called them Carbon County's Ridge Road and Wellington's Ridge Road Project Area. The new agreement for this project area is based off of the one that we have for Price River Terminal, which after the law changes went through, we rewrote everything. We're trying to keep them as, as uniform as possible. It'll be easier to administrate, um, both for the city and for the county. The agreement calls for an eighty percent increment, um, for a ten-year period. The agreement is for twenty-five years, correct, Christian, the one that we have?
You know, it doesn't set that forth in here. It doesn't state the specific time, unless that's by statute, but we might wanna add that in there and say that.
I'm, I, I, I'd have to pull it up and, and look again, but with, with Price River Terminal, that's what we did, is we set it up for a twenty-five-year agreement that if in that period of time, a parcel of ground was, was triggered, um, and they wanted to develop a business on that piece of ground, that ground would trigger. The base year of what its taxable value would be set, and then if they build a building on that and the, the value of that parcel went from, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, the incremental value or the, the change in that, the increase of nine hundred thousand dollars, that is what would be the tax based off of that new. nine hundred thousand dollars, that is what would be the tax based off of that new, um, value, is what would be provided to the agency, which would then be able to put in improvements or provide incentives to the business that came into that. The standard agreement that we've had, we, we've asked for eighty percent of the increment for a ten-year period. Every taxing entity that participates in it can choose if they want to go with eighty percent or fifty percent or hu- hundred percent. The old agreement that we're replacing was a fifteen-year agreement at a hundred percent of the increment. Um, the new one is eighty percent of the incremental tax generated for ten years. With the, the concerns with some of the, the people, that's one reason why these new agreements have a parcel-specific, um, trigger year, is each parcel, if, if we develop two parcels of ground here, it will push up the value of the, the surrounding parcels, but only the ones that are specifically called for to trigger will be there. Ideally, to, to extend the life of the area, um, at least the agency and one of the taxing entities have to come into an agreement to be able to extend their life. Ideally, we'll go out and, and pursue agreements with the school district, with Pridewide, with Price, um, with the water conservancy district, so that we would have more entities participating. They would have to approve a, a separate interlocal agreement with the agency, and they could specify to what extent they wanted to participate for economic development. Um, I think eighty percent is a, is a good amount. The taxing entities, the school district, Pridewide, they would still receive a, a certain amount, and then it would provide the funding mechanism to be able to hook and bring in some economic growth.
Thank you. Which definitely is a needed element as we consider our economic diversification, but also expansion of existing businesses along that corridor. My understanding, Commissioners, is to look at and to act on this interlocal agreement if there, before we do so. Any other, any other questions? But we'll need to convene as the Carbon Community Development Agency.
So we act as the Commission?
So it needs to be approved at, by the Commission and then...
Right.
By the agency. Both, both legal bodies would have to take an action.
So we'll, we'll handle the one as a Commission first before we convene as the Development Agency.
I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreements for Ridge Road and Wellington redevelopment areas.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll need a motion to go into the Development Agency.
Make the motion that we convene as the Community Development Agency.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So same item that is there is just this review and possible approval of that interlocal agreement for both of the areas on Ridge Road.
I'll make the motion that we approve the interlocal agreements for Wellington and Ridge Road redevelopment areas as the Community Development Agency.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to reconvene as the Carbon County Board of Commissioners.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll go ahead and push that forward then, Commissioners, and, uh, and get in touch, get on the agendas with the other taxing entities then.
Okay. Um, would, would one of the Commissioners want to do that? Do you want my office to do that? Christian, who do you wanna get it out to the different agencies?
We probably need to notice it up. Christian, is that something you could help us with?
Sure.
And, uh, just so that we can get notice to them and ask to be on those agendas?
You bet.
Or however they would choose to have us come.
Right.
Probably one of us could attend or...
Please, um, make us aware of when their meetings are, so that we can s- decide which of the three is able to go.
Right. Once we notice it up and find that out. Thank you. Last item is to rotate the Commissioner Chair position to Commissioner Casey Hope's. Commissioners, as you know, we rotate that every six months, and so beginning in January, that would make Commissioner Hope's the, the Chair, the Commissioner Chair.
I'll make the motion.
I'll step down and second that. All, and, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your work. There's a lot of items on that this time.